Hello. Hello Anita.
Hi Dan, how are you?
How are you?
I'm fine. I got busy today. I thought, was I supposed to come see you today?
I don't think so.
Okay. Good.
Let me see where I can.
You're on top of the project. I wondered if I just, I was thinking about just coming over, saying hi, seeing what was going on. I didn't have anything. And then I got busy with some other things and I didn't make it.
I know.
So as long as you're content, we're good.
I think I lost you there for a minute.
Yeah. Mo, right, Leroy. Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Here's the password. You can go to either London TWP one or two. I don't think, no, for that one you do not. Yeah, that's a free one. Trying to see where I can. I bring people in.
Are you far enough apart to make?
I am certainly hoping.
Yeah. That's one thing, if we're gonna do this, at least when we can do it from home, everybody, there's no reverberation, we can all talk.
Exactly, yeah, Leroy's out in the other part of the office.
Perfect.
Alright, let's. Gosh darn it. Trying to see. Last time I was in, it was showing to bring people onboard, but I don't see that. Unless we don't have the people up yet. Cause I think it's.
Well, it should tell you.
So far.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure that you were taking good notes and being prepared to do that for us.
Yes, actually, yeah, there, there was a couple of things that um, I think the minutes should maybe be changed a little bit that was not added. Oh, somebody's coming on. That might be Leroy.
So, alright, that's all. That was my reason for. And then I didn't make it, so.
Yeah. No problem. Alright, I'm gonna go check Leroy and see how he's doing. Is it connecting? We got more people. Just so you know, Dan, you are breaking up a little bit when you were talking earlier. Yeah, saying your broadband is low.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi Darrell.
How are you this evening?
So far, so good. We're trying to get Leroy onboard. Hi Doug.
Good evening. Good to see you Darrell, almost.
It's nice to be seen, Mr. Darling. I tell you that, it is very nice to be seen.
And then if you talk to our spouses.
I had a little mishap. I had a little mishap Friday night at the homestead here. So I got to utilize some township services.
They require stitches? Did it require stitches?
Does it require what?
Stitches, like medical sutures.
Oh, no, it didn't require any stitches, but uh my uh my furnace decided to start uh leaking some carbon monoxide into the house. No, but ended up with my wife and my mom taking ambulance ride to St. Joe's Hospital for a, a little stay overnight and into the next day.
Did they pass out?
What's that?
Did they pass out, or?
Not far from it though. Not far from it. Bad news. Bad news. So got a new furnace put in and all that happy stuff now.
Wow. You'll be more efficient this way, Darrell.
What's that, Dan?
I said you'll be more efficient.
You know, if I was in Florida right now, I probably wouldn't even need a furnace.
That's true.
I'm just saying, you know what I mean?
I do.
I'll try to get Leroy onboard.
Can you guys hear me okay now?
It's better.
Okay. Alright.
I just wanted to give you my name.
Okay.
I'm Martha Churchill and I'm a reporter for the Monroe News. Hi.
Good evening. Mr. Turner. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Turner, how are you?
Well, hello.
Hey. Did uh did you stop at that garage sale down there on Plankville last year and pick up that deer you got hanging up the?
Yeah, no, that's, that's kind of a real deer hunter.
I went to the fence where you got that, down at that garage sale.
Yeah, fifty bucks.
I seen it out there, I just wondered if you had pulled in and got it, seen you coming.
Oh yeah, I picked it up.
Like it.
Can, can I ask who is Farm Pad?
Farm iPad is me.
Oh.
Dan Cable.
Huh?
Dan Cable.
Oh, okay.
So, so obviously that uh Jimmy's trying to run into the wire here because it says he's changed his name to Tyler.
Yeah, it's my son's computer.
There you go.
I'm sorry, Leroy's gonna try restarting his computer to see if that works. The passwords aren't working for some reason.
Okay. Doug, tell your kids to quiet down.
You, you see I was already muted? It's a good thing unless you want to talk.
We're just waiting for Leroy to get on yet.
Okay, so Leroy's still trying to connect. If anything, we could share a computer.
Okay. Looks like everybody else is connected. You got a flag, do you need to?
Yeah, I believe I do, as a matter of fact, let me run and get it real quick.
I could take a picture in front yard, but I don't have one here.
Alright, I got one.
There you go. Are we still waiting on Leroy?
He's still trying to sign in, if anything, he can listen and use mine.
Okay.
That's why we came down to the hall.
Alrighty. It's seven thirty, I guess I think. Meeting the order with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Maybe next month we'll sit down together.
Okay, that would be nice, wouldn't it?
Yes, would. So. Alrighty. Um, roll call. Uh, myself. Vice Chair, Mr. Darling.
Here.
Secretary, Anita Robb.
Here.
Kenneth Howard.
Here.
James Turner.
Here.
Pam Ackerman.
Here.
Larry Feeblecorn.
Here.
Darrell Nichols.
Present.
And we are looking for uh, Mr. Ziski.
He's over there. He said yes.
Alright. Um. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Anybody need additions, corrections they want to make? Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, hopefully we can be done tonight in reasonable time. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Alright. Motion by Anita, seconded by
Pam.
I believe. Alright. So, let's discuss the approval of last month's minutes.
Okay, I have a couple of things.
Do we, do we need to vote on that motion?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Probably should. We gotta do a roll call vote? I guess, so alright.
Yep.
Alright, uh, I'm in favor of uh, approval of the agenda. Mr. Darling?
For. Yes.
Kenneth? Kenneth?
Come on, sorry.
Alright, James Turner?
Yes.
Pam Ackerman?
I think you called out my name, but yes.
Okay. Darrell Nichols?
Yes.
And Leroy?
Yes.
Alright, motions carried. Um, let's go on to the minutes then. We had some thoughts there, I believe.
Yes, um, on the new business SP twenty dash zero one. We need to add that they need the depth measured.
Okay.
It was not on there. And then also, although there's discussion in the minutes, it doesn't actually say what to change um, for the unfinished business, large solar energy system ordinance review. I'm wondering if it should be added, what needs to actually be changed. And I do have those, if you would like them.
Okay.
If I could. Their mics.
One. Uh, you know, I thought that we had said that there would be a way, we weren't gonna make him pump it out. The guy's done every, we're just gonna go out there in a boat if we have to and measure how deep the water is and come up with a good estimation. We're not gonna make the guy go through the trouble of pumping the water out, even though he offered.
Right, Ron did state that he has a way of measuring it um, by like a boat going out there and measuring it. So he doesn't have to actually drain it. But that was a stipulation that um, was discussed last month, is to measure the depth.
I think it should be amended. I agree, do we need a motion for that amendment?
Yes.
Eric.
Move, move to amend the minutes that uh, showed that we approved the SP twenty dash zero one application uh, the two point three acre pond with the requirement of measuring the depth of the pond. I think that was what the original motion was.
Yes. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Doug, approved by Anita. Is there any discussion?
Do you mean a minute, I mean a citizen time?
Nope. We haven't got to that yet.
Well, when, when you do, this is Tim Crowley and I'd like to participate.
That's fine, we're, we're going over the approval of the minutes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry, didn't mean to jump in. The kind, the, the audio is kind of jumpy a little bit.
Okay, apologize. Um, is there any discussion on the, on the measurement or this, this amendment to the minutes? Hearing none? Yeah.
Dan, I just have a question, um, in the minutes it does say in the motion that um, including the measurement requirement for what the actual depth is at the center. That is what Doug said for the motion. So, is that not enough? It says that in the motion to approve the SP, the site plan.
Okay.
Okay. What the actual depth is at the center. Alright.
That was, that was the way that Doug made the motion, so I, I thought that that covered it.
Is everybody all set with that then?
Yes.
Okay. Nice catch Amanda, thank you. So.
You're welcome.
On to the next one then, we don't need to vote on that anymore. Right?
Withdraw the motion.
Yes.
If that's not supported, withdraws it.
Alright. But let's go on to the uh, the other one, the large solar system. We did have that I did not see in the minutes. And you have what there was Anita, we were changing the numbers and moving some things down.
Correct.
Read more the way that we thought we wanted it to read. Do you have, do you have that Anita, so you can tell?
Yes, I do have it.
Okay. Can you read it to us?
I sure can. B number eleven may want to be rewritten or eliminated. B fifteen should read planned lightning protection measures. B sixteen photometric plan is required. B seventeen additional details and information as required by the special use requirements of the London Township zoning ordinance or as required by the planning commission. H in screening portion of setbacks shall read fencing shall be at least seven feet in height and a minimum of a thirty foot setback from property lines and road right of ways. J two should include a minimum mature height of twelve feet for trees to be planted for that species. P abandonment and decommissioning, add soil testing and one acre grids. T inspections change to up to four inspections per year.
Okay, are there any questions to any of that that anybody has? I don't, I didn't write it down, but I do remember where then we're gonna fit in to what we had discussed last month and, and um I think if somebody would make a motion to adopt these unless somebody has an issue, I would think we could adopt them all as a group and get the minutes adjusted.
Dan, this is Brian, I just had a question, can you clarify what the final language would be here on the, the soil testing and acre? Does that mean testing every single square acre of soil in the project prior to construction, or, I just want to understand what that means.
Brian, I, I can explain that, be happy to. We talked about you're taking some very productive ground to use this for your use. And the theory is that is at the end of the project, you would put it back so that it would be you know, was when you leased the property, correct? So for some people, that would be a soil test across three different soil types, eighty acres, and for some people that could be as tight as one acre grids. And my thought was as a farmer, if you're gonna put this back to the way it was before. That's where it would be, you need to be able to, and, and we wouldn't expect without documentation, but if that's the way the farmer had did it before he leased it to you, that's the way it should come back to him. That's where, that's where the up to you know, it doesn't mean it all needs to be, maybe we should reword that, so it says up to the possibility of one acre grids, because there's guys that spend money to do it that way. A lot of them are five acre grids. But there are guys that do go to one acre. So, as long as they have, show what they were doing before you took it over. I wanted it to go back to the way it was, because that was the understanding that I thought it would be.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me, I think, I do want to make sure that it was kind of dependent on what the farmer had, kind of had done previously. I'll ask Nick just to chime in if he has any questions on that, I just want to make sure we understood the obligation as you guys were describing it.
That sounds reasonable.
No, I mean, if we're gonna put it back to the way it was, then we gotta put it back the way. No, I mean, if we're gonna put it back to the way it was, then we gotta put it back the way it was all the way through. What's right, it's right. So. All right. Somebody willing to put in a motion so that she can get minutes amended, keep moving?
Dan?
Yeah.
Just, just real quick, um, if Anita, if you could send me those. Um, through email and I could get them added as into the revision. That would be great. Thank you so much. No problem.
Okay, I've got one more thing. At the end of the last meeting, I had asked that if we think about writing an ordinance for the instructional motocross track. Was at the very end, I'm not sure that got recorded. Pardon me?
Let's, can we finish the old business first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Probably better suited for commissioners comments.
Okay, sorry, having a hard time hearing. Okay, we'll do that then.
That's a good point.
Dan?
Well, that's the thing that I almost said last time, I didn't make the minutes, that's why I said it now.
Mr. Chairman?
Dan?
Yes.
Um, Pam, I'm sorry Darrell, go ahead.
I, I know we're trying to conduct the meeting here and it doesn't seem that people can, their microphones. Uh, Anita, you have, you have the ability to.
Well, I thought I.
Until citizens time for at least. Uh, the planning commissioners can get through this meeting.
Yep.
Ordinarily fashion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Dan? To go off of what Pam said, that was my mistake. She did contact me after the minutes went out. Um, I, she made the comment in, in the chat. Um, so I did miss that. It was down in commissioners comments in the minutes. Where she requested that the planning commission look into a motocross. Um, ordinance. So I think that should be added because that was something that I missed last meeting.
Okay.
And it's an instructional motocross track.
Right. Can, can we just finish the old business revision first?
I thought we were still unapproving the minutes, but.
We are.
Okay, go ahead.
For the minutes on the old business.
Gotcha.
I still need a motion.
Moved.
Can I ask a, can I ask a quick question, uh, to the chair?
Yep.
About the soil, uh, basically after the, the, the contract is over with with the solar. Um, what happens if it's noncompliant, you know, after the fact? What would be, um, what happens in that process?
There's a security bond that they're required to post that's, that we've got written in the ordinance that they would have to do. Or that, that whether it's a security bond or irrevocable letter of credit, something that's gonna protect them for the reclamation. Cuz let's say the solar company files bankruptcy. At some point in time, that security bond and that stuff is still in place, kinda like an escrow or whatever. So that there hopefully is enough money for doing some of the reclamation that would have to be done. But no, that's a very good question because the landlord also needs to be very do his due diligence when he's signing a contract. With the solar company or whatever project that you're having done. On your property that's long term, whether it's a phone tower or windmill or solar panel or whatever. That you gotta really go through it. It's not just the township to protect them. We gotta protect ourselves as property owners when we sign that and make sure that, you know, whether you require them to put the money in an escrow or. Uh, something that, uh, that something happens that you can get access to it and legally get to it type of a situation. But that's a very good observation. That's real.
All right, thank you.
Very good. All right. So now can we get a motion to get the old business minutes corrected?
So move. Support.
That was Doug and Darrell then.
Yep. Is there any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll move to a roll call vote. I guess on the list I'm first, so I vote in favor of the revision. Mr. Darling?
Yes.
Anita Straub?
Yes.
Kenneth Howard?
Yes.
James Turner?
Yes.
Pam Ackerman?
Yes.
Yes.
Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Ziski?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next continuation. Uh, Pam, I believe you have another correction for the commissioners. Comments portion of the, of the minutes?
Yes, sir. I had requested that we write an ordinance for the instructional motocross track. We brought this up a while ago. I just got put to the side.
Okay. Do you, uh? Who's, so who's gonna start to try and find out about this?
Do we, do we not have an ordinance for, do we not have an ordinance for Cycle City or whatever's right down here by the dragway?
Well, we, we got. We've gotta finish the minutes and approve the minutes as a whole cuz we just approved the amendment, correct?
Right.
So, yeah. The discussion for the, the track or whatever would come up like.
Going to new business on our agenda.
We did the agenda. We're doing the minutes. All right. Why don't you make a motion Pam and we'll see if we can get that added to the minutes and then we'll discuss about it during today.
I, I make a motion that we write an ordinance for instructional motocross track in London Township.
Okay. Do I hear? Second.
Who seconded it?
Pam.
Pam made the motion. Who seconded it? I wasn't looking. You did, Dan?
No, I didn't. I can't.
The, the, wait, the motion, the motion is to amend the minutes to include that Pam asked for an ordinance. It's not a motion to write an ordinance. It's.
That's right.
We're doing minutes right now.
All we're doing is minutes.
Thank you. Thanks Doug.
All right. So did you get a second to your motion Pam?
Not that I know of.
Is there a second for the motion?
To amend the minutes, include her, her narrative, yes.
Okay. We now have a second. We've had enough discussion, I assume? All right. So we're gonna amend this for the commissioner comments to include that she'd like to come up with a, uh. Ordinance for instructional motocross. Um. So, uh, let's do a vote. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Darling?
Yes.
Anita Straub?
Yes.
Kenneth Howard?
Yes.
James Turner?
Yes.
Pam Ackerman?
Yes.
Larry Febercorn?
Yes.
Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Leroy Ziski?
Yes.
And myself as chair, I say yes. Motion carried. Now, can we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move. Darling?
So moved by Darling, is there a second?
I'll second.
All righty. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none? Uh, let's have another roll call. All right, Anita Straub?
Yes.
Kenneth Howard?
Yes.
James Turner?
Yes.
Pam Ackerman?
Yes.
Larry Febercorn?
Yes.
Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Leroy Ziski?
Yes.
Um, myself, I say yes, Mr. Darling?
Yes.
All right. I think we got the minutes put to bed, guys. So now we will move on to first citizens time.
I would like to say if whoever the host is, so during the Zoom meetings. You all, uh, non-resident people or non, uh, board members. Uh, until they can talk.
Can you hear me, Tim Crowley? I had to unmute. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I muted the people that we were getting feedback from.
Okay. So. Sounds good, Mr. Crowley. You can have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity while the planning council was together to talk about the, uh, um, sand pit extraction and ordinances. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I know that the ordinances are being discussed. So I wanted to make sure that while the group was all together, I gave my input. I know a lot of people have heard this and I apologize for that, but bear with me. I just wanna give a little background. I've been here for about seven, going on eight years. I live near the corner, Allison Road, near the corner of Tuggle Hill. I live right across from a brand new gigantic five acre pit. That's very close to the road. And down the road on Allison Road, of course, was Newark's pit. Well, I've been here the first year I was here and I scoped it out well. I knew about the track and everything. There was no trucks or anything like that. And then lo and behold, one year later Newark's pit. That went on for a while until the road was demolished. And one time up, and I think Darrell pointed it out one time, there's a wash point right by my road. And it washed through and I called the MCRC and I said, what are all these trucks? Why isn't the road maintained? They came and threw some stuff down and that, that really started my whole journey of this whole thing is why the heck is this road not maintained? And why are these people willy nilly doing what they want? When I found out from Ron Youngblood helped me out a lot. And I found out that, you know, what the ordinance were and what their hours were and I realized Newark was basically doing as he wanted. Doing stuff, uh, hours and all this stuff rolled into me actually having to get a hold of Eagle. Because you guys saw the pictures, he dumped garbage in there and was burying it. Buried a darn Boeing alley back there. So that's what I had and I worked really hard with Ron and kinda cleaned that up. Thank you guys. Appreciate it. But anyway, or Ron, I appreciate your help. Um, anyway. And now I got this pit across the way. And in all this, there's a couple of things that come out that can help. I think that we all can say that two things are happening. One is the road is not maintained. It doesn't get maintained. The roads are an issue. They're supposed to, the contractors and the people that are supposed to repair these roads, they don't. Why is that? The other thing is, is the ordinances themselves are incredibly loose and they're not enforceable. I could count the violations on my hand here. Newark's completed his pit, violation after violation after violation after violation. I could say the same for Ed over there, numerous violations. So obviously you're rewriting these things. He's great. I had to get MCRC out here and Randy Pierce, the head guy, that asked him what the hell's going on and why is my burn so destroyed by Newark? And why won't anybody fix this? And he basically told me, same thing that you said earlier, you need a security bond. You gotta have an escrow account. And that escrow account is in place to repair the road, put it back to shape. They don't necessarily use it, but it's put in there to make sure they repairs it. He basically told me without that, they won't fix the road. And that's money right in their pocket. Think about it, thousands of shock. Right in the pocket, bottom line stuff. Anyway, my questions here are, why are they so loose and why are they basically written by Ed? Ed's at every one of those meetings. You wouldn't get them approved if it wasn't for Ed. So basically, the whole township is for Ed's business. He's the only one doing it. Um, and I don't understand that. So when Pam Ackerman put out today, uh, some noise and, you know, common ordinances that you have with communities, I thought. Why can't I have any of those? I've been exempt the entire time. I've had to put up with all this nonsense. I think, and I'm doing this for the next guy. Because I probably won't live here too much longer. I just am done. But at any rate, um, you know, it needs to be tightened up. It isn't Ed's place. These roads aren't for Ed. He has not been maintaining it. Without escrow account, won't get maintained. The other thing is, is that there's no resident advocate on these places. You're over there, Ed's well represented, everybody's represented. Who is gonna be the, uh, the advocate? If it isn't me, you guys, I believe, need to be the resident advocate. Not how can we make this all work for Ed? Now, other thing that I noticed is that it needs to be time bound. Right now what Ed does, he opens up a whole bunch of pits and kinda works at them. So he's got them all secured. He's like that, uh, carpenter or painter opens up a job. Fifteen jobs and works one week here, one week there, one week here, one week there. He gets all the money for all the jobs and secures all the jobs, but kind of a pain for everybody, but what the heck? It's good for his business.
Right.
I think that needs to change. I think you need to have one pit at a time. I think you need time bound. I think that you need to have tiers. One acre is a hell of a lot different, excuse my language, than five acres. It shouldn't be right next to the road right here. There's all sorts of things that need to be repaired here. And that's the gist of what I have on the thing here. And I really would like to be part of the ordinances. I would like to see them. I'd like to, maybe I need to get a, a group together. To, uh, um, you know, be an advocate for this.
We, we under, we understand your concerns. Um, I'll address them briefly. We are working on, apparently we have figured out that, uh. Some of the ordinances we've been trying to redo since oh seven haven't been done quite correctly. So we're going to be working soon to get them straightened out. And I know from visiting with Ron that we've talked about adding some things to make sure. That, uh, they get finished up properly so they don't get the sand drug out. And not get finished so that you can look at a completed pond across the road from your house. So I do with constraints of time. Um, I appreciate your comments. And, uh, we will take them under advisement. We're not, we're not done working on that stuff unfortunately, so.
And I, I'd like to, I know you have a March thing. I, I want another opportunity to review and, and maybe get a group of people together. I mean, this isn't it. I, I thank you for your things. But, you know, I think it's, I, it's my best interest to see this through. I know you guys spent twenty minutes there recutting the minutes. Give me a second to finish what I'm gonna say. And, and, and I just wanna be involved in the process and I, I appreciate it.
All right, have a three minute.
Make sure that.
Peyton's comments.
Go ahead.
You've already been close to five minutes and we have three minutes on citizens comments, so.
All right.
Thirty seconds.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the time allotted to me. Thank you very much for the consideration.
All right.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Could, could I say something real quick about the ponds?
You may.
So, um, just to address Mr. Crowley there for a minute. Um, I know the guy down the road from him wasn't Ed Gerard that done that pond. It was a different, uh, a guy that dug the pond. And the guy that's doing the pond across from Mr. Crowley, I know is Ed. Uh, last month in January, we just okayed another pond from a guy that come down from. Uh, Mount Morris or wherever he came down from. So, I mean, there's more than one guy that digs the pond. And I understand that the guy digging it across from, uh, Mr. Crowley is Ed Gerard. I understand that and I get it. But the, the citizens that apply for these ponds to be dug. Uh, they hire whoever they want to. So whether it was a guy from Mount Morris or the other guy that done Mr. Newburst Pond or Ed. Across the road. Uh. Should really up to the individual property owners. Who they decide to.
Is that, is that?
Them.
That.
Their, uh, ponds for them and, and that.
Is that Darrell's wifi or mine?
Darrell's, Darrell's.
Darrell's.
Apparently you have your own free limiter on yours Darrell. All right.
Hey. I would also like to say one thing too regarding his comments with a couple of different things, not sticking up for anybody in the pond business, but. They do dig different ponds and I know this for a fact. If you go look at London Ag. When they were dug, they have multiple ponds, multiple quarries. And the reason is because of that is because the demand is at certain times for certain soils. And as you dig the pond, it, it has different classes of sand and everything. So he's not gonna sit there and haul it to one location. And pile it up and spend all that money. To start another one, you know, and to complete that pond to start another one. So when somebody goes and starts another pond, that's to get the class A sand. You know, because the class B sand's not selling or vice versa. Or topsoil, you know what I'm saying? And I, I understand it's an issue, but if you go look at all these big quarries, I mean, Stoneco does the same thing. So does Ag Industries. I mean, they started that other big quarry, but they're only digging on it. Partial time, you know, and that, and that's kind of the, that's the ball that rolls with the pond business. I mean, that's just how.
Yes, but you're, it's in a residential. I know it's res- but we're not talking about a quarry on acres way out. We're talking about right next to somebody's house.
Stoneco is right.
Should be more consideration than that. I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I don't think the, the burden of different kinds of sands should lie on me. I'm sorry about that, but it shouldn't.
Okay.
I'm, I'm done. I gotta go, guys. Enough. This will just go in the negative direction. So I, I appreciate all the input.
Thank you. Is there anything else for citizens time? Anything else for citizens time? We will move on to unfinished business. Back to the solar projects.
If I may, I added that on there to the agenda. That way, if, if I can remember correctly from the last meeting, the minutes would reflect the findings. Um, that the planning commission would want the board to change. And then this would be the time to discuss those changes, um, as findings and make the recommendation that the board make those changes and adopt if the planning commission so chooses. If you intend to make it a big discussion and spend much time, then so be it. But that was the intention on including that in the agenda because I thought all the talking was done last time, just to clarify.
Did, did you get your, you know, you was going to talk, there was some verbiage, verbiage changes you wanted to make? The setback things that we talked about, did them get changed? If, if we're good on that, then I'm really. I mean, I, you know, where do you want to go? We got, we got some stuff.
Want to say something?
I wasn't going to make any changes after you guys had looked at it. I wasn't going to put any changes in after, uh, you guys met last time and suggested your findings. And then rehatch it. I figured if anybody had any other advice or recommendations, I could give them to the board to consider. And let the board consider making those, you could do it as, you can do it as citizens, citizens. And I can do it as a zoning administrator, anything that has come up between that meeting and this meeting. Right, can ask them to consider such thing.
Well, the stuff that we had to redo in the minutes, did you not get that added to what we did last week or last month, Ron?
No, I was going to add it after it was approved this meeting.
Are we, are we on to the solar project? Is that where we're?
Yeah.
Unfinished business, solar, yep.
Yeah. I, I do have a couple of questions or a couple of things that I would like to add. Who is, um, in charge of maintaining the land prior to the road to the fence? And that's one question. And then the other one is we had talked about a 30 foot setback for the fence. Um, is that from the right away, 30 feet? Or is that 30 feet from the road? Or where's the 30 feet go from? And I, I truly believe it should be farther than that. I know we kind of let the solar guys last time talk us into bringing it forward a little bit, but I kind of measured everything out from my back of my property line. And my goodness, that's pretty close to somebody's property. I, I just, I don't know. I. I mean.
Well, I thought we talked about that the fence would be 30 foot from the edge of the road right away. And then all the trees and all the stuff that they were going to do to hide the fence was going to be in that 30 foot from the fence to the right away. We can't do anything on the right away. So then is if it's back up against your property line, I thought it was at a hundred foot there. Am I mistaken?
I thought it was 30 foot also.
Now, if you go to, to, on the ordinance on H, the setback uh, distance from all non participating property boundaries is 50 feet, the way it's written. And it is, uh, 30 feet from the road right away to where the fence is. And the landscaping has to be uh, between the, the fence and the, the road right away or the proper neighboring property. Uh, so that, that way, when you look out your backyard or you're looking across that, you're going to see the shrubbery or berm and, and the landscape aerial, then there'll be the fence and then there'll be the solar. On that. And then it would be the, uh, the, the, the company that's doing the solar panels, the solar ray or whoever buys and takes over that contract. They will be responsible for maintaining all that landscape and the fence throughout that entire duration of that project on that, uh, time period. It is not the you, the, that also comes back that the property owners need to can, could also dictate what they, they might want with their agreements with them because the property owner does have some control uh, in that situation. But for, for what we've got rolled up, I think it's, uh, and then the height. We've got 20 foot. If you read Augusta Township, there's this 15 feet. A number of other townships were 15 feet or less. Uh, in Augusta Township, there's a 600 and I think, what was it? 664 eight project that's under proposal through their planning commission, the Whitetail Solar Project. That's, uh, underway up there and that they've got signed agreements with a lot of property owners up there at the moment.
So I guess, so, so basically the setback for a house off of the property line is 50 feet from the rear of the.
Fifty feet from the property line, wherever.
This would be the setback for a house is what I'm saying. And then you're saying another 50 feet could possibly be a solar panel. So basically from my back door, I walk out of my back door, I have a hundred feet, feet, which is 33 yards to a actual solar panel.
No.
Yeah.
It would be fif- 50 foot, you're 50 foot off the line. Their fence is foot off the line. And then the solar panel will be beyond the fence.
I thought it was 30 feet for fence.
Let's see. Okay, I'll, I'll read the, uh, entire H. It says setbacks, a minimum setback distance of 50 feet from all non participating property boundaries on the outside perimeter of this large solar energy system. And existing private or public roads, railroad right of ways shall require all solar, uh, arrays shall be, let's see, whoops. Solar rays, 75 feet for buildings provided the setback is 100 feet and shall be required adjacent to all residence structure. So there's a hundred foot there. When adjacent properties is participating in the large solar array, there shall be no setback. So like if you got two property owners side by side, uh, it's like considered as one project. They don't put a fence between them. So again, I'll, I'll reread that thing because I stumbled through it. If, if you've got your, your draft, uh, ordinance, I know Amanda got those sent out to everybody or not.
See, well, no.
From what we had, uh, talked about there last week or excuse me, last month. But H setbacks, a minimum setback distance of 50 feet from all non participating property boundaries. And then that's where we included at last week's discussion through Nita, her minutes, because we had the motion that it's, uh, 30 feet measured from the road right away. That would go in there also. Then, uh, from, uh, let's see, the perimeter of the outside of the, uh, large solar array. And existing public roads, railroad right of way shall require also arrays and of 75 feet. Oh, excuse me, and existing, I, I gotta read this thing. I need to expand this thing on the screen. I've got it. My apology.
Putting new glasses.
Yeah, you're right. I need a new prescription. Uh, because I'm, I'm kicking myself. Yeah. All right. A minimum setback distance of 50 feet from all nine participating property boundaries on the outside perimeter of large solar energy systems. And existing public roads and railroad right of ways shall require also arrays and 75 feet for buildings provided that a setback of 100 feet shall be required adjacent to any residence, residential structure. So if you've got a residence next to a solar array, then it's a hundred foot setback from there.
Gotcha. From their, from the property line. Okay.
From the property line.
That makes sense.
And that's to the fence, if I understand it right. That's not to the first solar panel. That's to the fence. The solar panel are inside the fence.
Yes, the solar panels are all inside the fence.
They don't get to put one on top of the fence, Jim.
I, I agree with that. Yeah.
But, you know, with, with that said, and me stumbling through it twice, I, there's somewhere that we need to clean up the language that's mentioned. And then what we can do is put that on that line.
So, you know, we had, we had adjusted that fencing, you know, when we had talked about the 50 feet from the right away. We adjusted that fencing to 30 feet. Why don't we stick with the 50 feet? Like, so it makes sense with the 100 feet or you're, you're confusing, you know what I mean? So. I ju- I mean, 30 feet's not very far. I mean, you, you gotta, if you measure it out, it's really, it's not very far at all. And I mean, 50 feet, and then they go their 10 feet or whatever they gotta do and they abide by the ordinance, you know, and adjust the grid as is.
Well, I'm, I'm the same though. We don't, you got property owners depending on how they're going to lease that. But they don't void that because I had a, a property owner was telling me here recently that, uh, if it's within the fenced area, they're paying the, the lease or the rent on the, the property per acre. But if it doesn't have solar, not part of it, that they've got a really low discount uh, to the point where it doesn't even pay, hardly pay the taxes that would be on there. And so the, the question is, is, you know, if it's going in, how do you make these things large enough efficient? Otherwise they're going to be knocking on the doors to set these things up in more places. And with, uh, Governor Granholm now in the head of the.
Whitmer.
Or G, we may see more push, more stimulus for these renewable energies or requirements of large businesses which may push this industry. Cause like I referenced, if any of you guys get a chance to, uh, go to Augusta Township's website, you can pull up the Whitetail Solar Project. Uh, and then also their ordinance, because we got, gosh, last summer, they brought us like six or seven different ordinances. And that's when I first read Augusta and then I have to read it here again last week. That where they have a 15 foot height requirement, we're at the 20 foot because of the changes in technology. Uh, the one question is that we should state that the 20 foot, would that be, that's the top of the solar panel when it's fully standing erect, not necessarily the poles. Uh, is what I would, uh, ask for, that we should clarify that as we do this final write on this thing.
I mean, I guess, I understand that. And I, I guess the, the, if they can't meet the setbacks and they don't put a solar farm there. And I guess if it doesn't adjust to their budget, then I guess that's just not, I mean, it just goes along with everything else. I mean, I get a small piece of property. I can't build a house there if I don't have the setbacks. I mean, they're planning on building what? A hundred and 20 acre, 180 acre solar farm? I mean, they can adjust their setbacks to go to our.
They're looking for more than that.
Or 1800 acres or whatever it is. Yeah. I mean, that's a lot. And, I mean, I just, I just would rather look out for the residents and make sure they're all not getting bombarded with solar panels wrapped around their house where they can't even possibly get rid of their house or sell it. Their value goes down. I did a little research in it and within, you know, a square mile of a solar farm, your house depreciates value 10%. I mean, you gotta, it's gonna affect residents and if there's not enough setbacks where people can actually, you know, have a decent living, country living because they got a solar farm wrapped tight around their house. I, I don't think that's acceptable. I mean, that's just my opinion. But I think we should really look at it and sure those setbacks are set where it's not going to interfere with everybody surrounding these solar farms. Cause you know, one guy's getting, two guys getting rich off it, but the rest of people are suffering. So, I mean, that's just, I mean, we just had a guy come on here about the ponds. I mean, people are making money and he's suffering. And that's kind of what it's going to involve in this. And I mean, if we're going to go through the pond ordinance and make it feasible for residents, we should also do this. So that's just my opinion with.
But we also have to respect private property rights. People have paid for the land that they've paid.
I agree.
They've paid the interest, they've paid the bank. Some cases if they're, if it's farmland, they may not have made any money on some years. And that's why there's some of these different programs. And so on the same note, uh, I remember John Sullivan was the attorney for the township years ago. And he said at a meeting, he says, there's three things you can do. If you don't like what your neighbor's doing, you can, uh, he says, you can either buy them, move or shut up. That was what his, was at a, a public meeting. And I, I always remembered him saying that. I'm like, yeah, one option is you, you buy the neighbor. So.
Leroy, you have something? Leroy has something also. Playing musical chairs.
All right, get your chairs and wheel.
No, I'm using a foot mobile. My concern is that's not in anything I saw was the maintenance underneath the panels. Uh, we don't, uh, I, I haven't seen anything that would control when they have to mow or take care of the ground. I realize that they're going to do it. But let's say they decide not to do it and they create, um, basically an anxious seed to be spreader on the community. So the poor neighbor to the east of them or south of them or north of them is going to wind up with stuff they don't really want. So I think they should work up some sort of a, a maintenance schedule, uh, a target. Um, so many times a year or whatever to get the, uh, underneath these panels taken care of. Um, so they don't affect the neighbor. And, um, I don't know whether they have something that they've already put together for somebody else or we need to put it together. I just think that um, you know, a mowing schedule or however, I don't even know how they're going to get underneath these panels to take care of the weeds. They haven't told us how that's happening. Uh, if you got a panel that's going all the way, 20 feet all the way to the ground. Do you have to wait till they're standing up straight to actually do the process? So that's my concern.
Leroy, I would also add to that, the outside perimeter of the property too. I mean, if there's a hundred feet, who's taking care of that? Is that just going to grow up in weeds? Or, you know, to the road frontage also. I mean, somebody's got to maintain. Is it the homeowner or the owner of the land's responsibility? Or is it the solar panels responsibility?
That's all true. So. That's, uh, my concern ran into while I was going through it over this last week. I, I just assumed it was. If we had other concerns, we bring it to this meeting and, and, um, added to it somewhere along the line. Um, like I say, I don't know whether these folks has given us this ordinance have written something like that for somebody else or not, or how that's going to work. So that's my concern. You know, in the township, um, when I was having trouble getting, uh, people to, um, take care of the cemetery, I, I created a, a schedule for them that uncertain times they had to do the cemetery. And I think this is the same thing we should have them do is certain times of the year, they have to make sure that they have taken care of it like they do for soil conservation and those kind of things. So. I'm just throwing it out there as something I'm concerned about. And so I don't know whether it's twice a year, they have to make sure of that or not. Maybe Doug can give more insight on that because he, he's more of that type of taking care of that kind of stuff for Mr. Cable or whoever. So that's my concern.
Dan, I'm happy to chime in on the, the planting thing if, if helpful.
Yep.
And, and Nick, feel, feel, feel free to add. I do know that in, in the ordinance under J four, the failure to install or continuously maintain the vegetative, uh, buffer is a violation of the special use. So maintenance of the, you know, the perimeter of the project, uh, I know is contemplated as, as part of the ordinance. And I believe a planting plan would be something that would be, you know, in order as part of the site plan review process. To, you know, typically, uh, these projects are either planted with, you know, some kind of, you know, grass mix and it just, just gets mowed or sometimes some kind of native planting mix that will only grow to a certain height. Cause obviously you don't want to obscure uh, the panels because they need to be seeing the sun, uh, during the day. But, uh, typically I believe, uh, and Nick, you can confirm if I'm wrong, that that planting plan would, would I think be part of the, the kind of the site plan review, uh, process, uh, where we'd actually, you know, we'd have the full site designed and could actually put in, uh, you know, here's what the planting plan is going to be. And then on the, so I'll stop there and I can, I can chime in on the fence topic too, but, uh, I'll stop there on the planting part.
Well, I understand the planting part, but how are you going to maintain it after you plant it? See, that's where the township board in, in, uh, discussions get. If we don't have a schedule upfront, then there's, well, he said, she said, the neighbor said, well, you know, they're supposed to do it, you know, twice a year and they only go out there and do it once, or they're supposed to do it three times a year, you know? That's the definition I would like to see somewhere. And so there's not discussion that the township board gets beat up or planning commission, whoever the ordinance enforcer gets beat up or something that we can simply solve right now. So that's my concern.
And depending on the, the planting, uh, there, there, I mean, there could be an instance where it's not exactly mowed. And depending on the the planting, uh, there there, I mean, there could be an instance where it's not exactly mowed, or it's mowed infrequently based on, you know, a mix that grows shorter. Um, I think sometimes like a twice, like, you know, mowing twice a year. Like is a reasonable, you know, thing to put in. There could be instances where, you know, we do, like, part of the, it ends up being like a pollinator habitat, or ends up being some other kind of planting where where you might not mow at that same frequency. But that's probably something that could be built into the to the permit. If you had a mowing restrict, you know, a mowing. Uh, frequency built into the ordinance, and, you know, we did something different with planting, I'm sure you could contemplate that in the permit.
It to to that comment, I remember back when the Ford plant went in up at Mylan. One of the proposals was, you know, they've got kind of a random landscaping around here. Uh, one of the proposals was completely natural, where, you know, they planted a handful of things and they just let it grow up, be wildlife or wild. In nature for what the look is, and part of that was is, that was one of the proposals from some of the folks in the city. Uh, that one ended up not being the one adopted, but. There are different people with different views of what's pretty and what's not pretty, what they wanna look at, what they don't wanna look at. And, you know, we've even had people complain about the color of their neighbors' homes, so. Uh, anything's fair game, it seems like for for that, so. Uh, that's where it comes in for the planning commission and what uh, um, Brian had said was for. You know, how you how you pitch that, you can include that in the plan, how they're gonna do it in the requirements, but I was making notes about for. Somehow maybe making some kind of notation requiring for what their plan would be, not necessarily dictate what it should be. But just require that something is in writing.
That's a fair point, Larry. Leroy, fair point.
And then on the on the fence piece, Dan, just to 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 add on that, uh, I think. Yeah, originally, I think the fence, you know, wasn't contemplated in the ordinance, and then we had the discussion of. You know, well, if you're doing a fifty foot setback, how how far typically away is the fence, and typically there's a twenty foot gap between, you know, the this on the outside. Per on the inside perimeter of the facility, there's the panels, then there's probably about a twenty foot gap for, you know. Vehicle access, mowing access, things of that nature. Uh, and then you would have the fence, so I think that's where the thirty the thirty foot came from, was, you know, a reduction of fifty foot setback to mark where the fence would be. Uh, but, uh, you know, I mean, typically, I mean, on a farm field, you know, fences, I think typically in ordinances, fences don't have a setback period, you know, a farmer. Farmer could go up there and put a fence in his property line today, um, but the thirty foot, I think, setback was was kind of a way to carve that out and say, okay. That in that thirty feet is where this vegetative buffer and where the planting is gonna go to to screen the facility. Um, so I think that's where that where that came from.
No, and if you do an adequate job of truly screening the fence, the facility, so that ten years down the road, we're not looking at it. Um, you're gonna need thirty foot to do that, I figured. I I thought that was fair myself.
On a residential setback, is it still a hundred foot to the fence, or are we bringing that into eighty? I mean, then now we're getting closer to houses.
No, I I thought it was a hundred foot there myself, so.
Basically, their solar pay panels would be one twenty. From the property line, if they need a twenty foot buffer.
The 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 fence would literally be a hundred foot from the property line. So your residents.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
So, so just a clarifying point there, the way the ordinance reads now, um. You know, it's from the outside perimeter of the large solar energy system. So the way that I guess, you know, it we as Apex were interpreting that is. Is that the the setbacks are from the the edge of the panels and then the fence lines in there, the in in between.
Well, I suggest you start at the edge of the road right away and work back from there and see what you end up with after that. So. I mean, that's why we're like, the farmer doesn't wanna have to go out there and maintain twenty foot that's not part of the road right away. Because your fence is back, you know, fifty foot, I mean, this is. When it's done, I I assume the farmer would assume. That he shouldn't have to worry about that, because there's gonna be vegetative that you're in charge of prior to the fence. And then everything else that's on road right away, he can choose to maintain, or he doesn't have to, whatever he's been doing the last twenty years. So. That's the way I'm looking at it.
So I guess his, what he was addressing is like. What we had just talked about with the hundred feet, he's saying that that would be where they their understanding is that's where the solar panels start. And we're saying that's where the fence starts. So we got two different, I I mean, I mean, obviously, we're creating the ordinance and they need to, you know, I mean, that, but.
Yeah, just wanted to bring that up, could maybe worth clarifying here.
Yeah, I agree, let's clarify that for that the fencing starts at the fifty feet or thirty feet or a hundred feet from. A property line where there's a residency.
I strongly agree with keeping it at a hundred feet behind a residential house.
Yes.
No closer than that, I mean, that's that that's, yeah.
That's exactly right, a hundred feet is. I mean, if you look around the township.
And a hundred foot, yes.
You you look around. You you look around the township, there's a lot of old farms that, you know, broke off the house and. And maybe an acre, two acres of land and sold the rest of the farm around them. Some people's backyards are only thirty or forty feet deep, you know? And when you're talking about a a fifty foot setback off of that, I I mean, I I gotta, you know. Air on the side of the citizens of this township, that we protect them as best we can. From having whatever it is in their backyard. So, that hundred feet, I don't think is uh, that's too much, not much to ask for right there.
I agree.
So the Congressional Budget Office says that.
You getting all this, Ron?
Sure am.
Okay.
Oh, hey, one uh, one thing you might wanna clarify in there, just as you're thinking about the residential structure. It, you know, it has fifty feet from non-participating property boundaries. Um, but when it talks about the residential structure, if you're if you're considering. Adjusting that to reflect property lines, you might wanna note it to be, you know, non-participating property lines. Um, you know, there might be a farmer, you know, with, you know, with a residence, and he wants to go ahead and have them, you know, as close as possible to the house, so just. You know, if you're contemplating that that kind of a change, I just suggest that you. Have not, you know, non-participating residential property lines, that you clarify that.
That's a, that's a fair point, Brian.
Agree with that.
Yeah, cuz that's what Jim's trying to do, is the non-participating, he's trying to protect them. That's been the whole point of the conversation.
Well, oh, what if, well, that's kind of hard, I guess, if it's a dividing property. They could always sell that property. And now then it isn't in compliance because it's not the joining, you know what I mean, I mean, it was. But it's thirty years long, then what, you know what I mean?
Because the easement runs with the land, I mean, if they sold the property, that property would still be a participating property. And would be still getting, you know, income from the project.
Well, sometimes they have two different, they have two different lots, and like their house is on one lot, and then they divide PA one sixteen up on their whole back lot. And that dividing lot, because they separated it like that, they could actually sell their house in one acre. Now all of a sudden, you got solar panels right up next to the property, because that's what they agreed on, but once they sold it. And I know you're buying it that way, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, but now it's in not in compliance with our ordinance, because it's not in the joint, you know what I mean? Uh, it doesn't get grandfathered in, or I mean, how does that work? I don't know, I I just think. I don't know.
That that in a way that would be grandfathered, because they they agreed to it, they own the property, it's their property, they're comfortable with it. And then if they go to sell the property, that property is as is, it's kind of like if you. You were buying a place and it had a hole in the roof, you know there's a hole in the roof when you bought it, you're gonna have to deal with it. Same way, if you look out the backyard and the neighbors got kind of a lot of junk where that does happen, we've got people where. They got pretty trashy backyards, and, you know, you may not see it from the road, but you see it from your backyard. That's one of the conditions that when you buy the property, you you know what it is.
Gotcha.
Or you know that you're gonna get salt or water unless some realtor tells you that, oh no, that we're gonna have something else.
Right.
All right, uh, we're not starting else, we got enough going here.
I got one quick question for for Brian or Nick, the uh, when you've got the the twenty foot height, that's twenty foot when the solar arrays. Are perfectly vertical, correct?
That would be at 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 max tilt, uh, i- if we used that that kind of a a double high panel, which would be determined later in the process.
That's, that's why I just wanted to clarify, cuz we we just had a height. Uh, where I do know from reading through the other uh proposal, that's that's. Being pitched up in the neighboring township, that they specifically outlined that it's fifteen feet at the the vertical of the the solar panel. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there any more discussion around this? So what's the plan, Ron? You're gonna draw this up now and have this all put together with these adjustments to come back to the meeting next month? For us to approve, is that what you're thinking?
Yep, we will, I'll get with the secretary and we will compare notes on what we've taken, um, and I may reach out individually just to clarify for. Further clarification, since it's been a couple meetings with the setbacks discussion, um, and some elements not making much sense. And then, um, yeah, next meeting, uh, your findings and recommendations should be ready to be made, uh, give it to the board.
Okay. So is there anything else we need to do on this at this time, or we can go on?
Well, I think if we're gonna review it again with these these changes, we should just table it till the next meeting.
Do I have a motion to do so?
Yeah, move to table until the March meeting, till that way, all the planning commission members can get the full. Clear, detailed ordinance as we've amended to be included, so that they'd have the chance to review it themselves. Cuz I think some, where's you got music going?
Figured it was your phone. All right, we have a second to table it?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, can't do it that way, right? Can we on a table, can we just all in favor say aye? I'm asking.
Just do the roll call.
Okay. All right. Kenny Howard. We're voting to table it.
Till March, yep.
Did you say me?
Yep.
Yes.
Pam Ackerman.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Leroy.
Yes.
Myself is a yes, Doug.
Yes.
Nita?
Yes.
Is Anita?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried.
Could you repeat who seconded that, please?
Me. I did.
Jim did. Tyler Turner. All right. So next, uh, new business, the annual review process with Ag Industries. I assume everybody got their stuff, got an opportunity to read it. They know what's happening. We'll turn it over to, I I believe that's Mr. Hayes, that's his responsibility.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, thanks for having us on this evening. Hopefully everyone's staying well. Uh, tonight I'm joined by Greg Colley, who's our new area operations manager for uh our Michigan region. Uh, as well as Todd Peaster, who's with Vibrotech, a consultant. That will monitor uh blasts as we begin blasting in the northeast expansion area. And just as an aside, you may or may not know that the decision was made when our site plan was approved, that uh. The consultant, in this case Vibrotech, would be retained directly by by the township to ensure independence. Uh, and and in other words, they're not working for us, they're not at our direction, they would be working directly for the township. But we would provide it the the feed of Vibrotech in an escrow account with the township. So, what I'd like to just briefly do is go over what uh, what's been accomplished since we last met in June or July, I think it was, of last year. And then briefly talk about our plan for this year. And uh, turn it over to Greg for him to fill in any details as appropriate. And then, uh, if you'd like, uh, we could turn it over to Todd, and he can talk about the monitoring plan for blasting, if that sounds okay.
That's fine.
Okay, is there a way for me to share my screen?
You would know better than I would.
It says, uh, host disabled participant screen sharing.
It's the little box at the top or bottom, it says share screen.
Anita probably has to enable it for him being, she's the host.
There we go.
Uh-oh, I'm trying.
Yeah, you're getting it, oh, we got your screen server.
Yeah, you.
You have to forward it to Rob.
I have to do what?
You have to forward it to Rob or turn it over to Rob that she can get it.
Oh, uh.
We're we've got a great picture you of you with a grandbaby, it looks like.
Uh-oh.
It's it's your, you were looking at your laptop screen.
Ah, sorry. Okay, so what do I do? Share screen.
And then tap on the, go to the participant list, I think is how you get to to Rob.
Okay, I think I might have done it, did I do it?
Yes, I believe we've got it.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone see that graphic?
Awesome.
Okay, so, um, what we've got here is our northeast expansion area into London Township, the the approved site plan. From uh, two thousand seventeen, uh, Olkey Road is to the north, Bunce Road is to the east, Day Road to the south. And then our existing quarry to the east, or to the west, rather, and to the south. So, since we met last time, what we've done is we've completed the uh construction of the perimeter berm. I believe when we, when we last met, we're about halfway done, we're to this northeast corner, and our contractor finished it all up. Uh, last fall. And has it vegetated, uh, we still have our soil erosion and sedimentation control permit for construction with Monroe County. Uh, and that's good through, I believe it's the end of July, so we have to make sure that 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 berm is green and growing uh before. Uh, the the permit gets released and and we don't have to renew it with the county. Um, so that that's all good progress, and just just as background, the reason why. Uh, we're not as far ahead as what we would thought, what we thought we would be originally, we we thought we'd already been here mining, but we haven't quite started that yet. Uh, we were able to find additional reserves to the south in Dundee Township. Uh, that that met our quality specifications, so we're we were able to keep going for another couple of seasons. So now we're to the point where we're almost out of reserves uh to the south. And we're looking at uh moving north into London Township, finally. Um, what we've done is we've stripped approximately six acres of soil from this general area. Down to the stone layer, the top of stone, about thirty feet, thirty-five feet deep. And we use most of that material, obviously, to build the berm. So now we're to the point where we need to uh get into this expansion area. And uh, we're looking to uh. Build a build or cut through with what's called a key cut to get into that area. And uh, that obviously will will require some blasting of the stone in order to do so. Let me show you another screen here, if I can figure out how to do this, just a second, please. Stop share. So what we're looking to do is our plant is further down to the south, it's off off of this map, if you can see it. We're looking to extend a conveyor line to the north. And move our primary crusher to this general vicinity, so we can serve the northeast expansion area. So we're to the point now, we're ready to start, or we will be this year, twenty twenty-one, we'll be ready to uh extend that conveyor line. So we're to the point now where we're ready to start, or we will be this year, twenty twenty-one, we'll be ready to extend that conveyor line, move the primary crusher, and then begin blasting the key cut to get into this expansion area. A couple of other things that developed that we hadn't planned for, just being totally transparent. There was ponded water that developed behind the berm, was visible from Olkey Road. And late last fall, we had our contractor drain that with the knowledge of the road commission into the Olkey Road ditch. So that should be taken care of and shouldn't be an issue going forward, but we'll continue to monitor that. We also continue to monitor the existing wetland areas that are shown here in dark green hatching right here, this area, as well as this area to the south. And we're required to do that quarterly monitoring per Eagle or the old M D Q and give them a report each time as well. I think that's about all I can tell you as far as what we've done and what our plan is for this year. Greg, would you mind filling in any gaps, going to a little more detail? And I do have the map from Matt Hissa that shows the a little more detail as far as the topography, if you want to show that.
Yeah, if you want to show it, Rob.
Let me see if I can find it. Go ahead.
Okay, basically, the Northeast cut is expansion is what we call it. We started stripping that area in in completion to complete the berms completed about fourth quarter twenty twenty. And we've continued stripping through first quarter this year to provide enough open area for us to begin developing that site. We will begin a large capital project here to to allow us to move into that cut probably around June of this year, which will involve us relocating some equipment from the south, putting some new equipment into the north to tie us in with our existing operations in Dundee Township. So we'll be running a a limited operation up there, not the full operation. Just enough for us to provide some sizing and extraction of the stone and and to feed our secondary circuit. So where we're at right now is starting to set up our our plans for blasting with some of the stripping that's been completed and to set ourselves up for putting in this large capital project, very significant investment on our part. So this is where Todd comes in and he wants to start setting us up to meet our permit requirements.
So before we pass it over to Todd, are there any questions that you may have for me or Greg?
I do not have any.
Okay. And again, after a two-plus-year delay, we're finally ready to get into the expansion area and begin begin blasting for serious. Okay, Todd, I'll turn it over to you. And Anita, you may have to release Todd to allow him to show his screen.
Okay. Did it work?
I don't see it yet.
It should be coming. Hold on. Okay, you should see the screen, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, one of the first steps was to do the pre-blast surveys. And so at that time, Vibrotech, or actually myself, I took care of inspections of ninety-four forty-eight Bunce Road, thirteen four hundred Oleneck, Olkey, nine zero four eight Bunce. Weber's at eighty-seven seventy had refused. And eight-six-five-seven, which was Paul Hardicam, he, we did his. We also at that time extended it to one into the next township. And that was Wayne Rogers and took care of that one. At the time, the exact location of where the mining was going to occur, we did not have, I did not have this property right here in our area. And so before we would continue, or before we start the blasting, I feel that we do need to pick up this inspection for sure and potentially reoffer Weber's since at the time it was indicated they were going to be moving and they have not moved. So we may want to pull them back in and confirm if they would want to be re-inspected or be inspected. And then back to all these properties. The other decision that was made by the township in two thousand seventeen was that they would want four seismographs. They would want those seismographs to be at these four properties where my cursor is. And those four would be where those seismographs would be. With the knowledge that fourteen seven hundred Olkey Road is actually going to be the closest location to their first shots indicated right here with the circle in these two icons. We would probably want to have a seismograph there and we could move it later if we needed to down the road or ultimately we could put five machines in. But ultimately, that's up to the township planning if they want five or if they want the four or how you want want us to proceed. So ultimately, our next steps before they would start the blasting is we would need to do probably two more inspections or at least offer them and then install the equipment and then set up a website for the township to review the data as it comes in. And then I believe that was about it. Rob, did I forget anything?
No, I think you caught everything, Todd. And just so everyone knows, the the guidance from the township or condition of the permit from the township was that every residential property within a thousand feet of the expansion area would be eligible for the structural inspection that that Todd referred to. And and we, the township has those those results as a baseline. So if there are any complaints in the future that where a resident feels that damage from a blast may have caused damage, we've got something to compare it to to see what was pre-existing. So that's the rationale behind behind the program.
Yeah, the distances that I have on each of these addresses, so these initial blasts are going to be twenty-five hundred feet, thirty-three hundred feet, twenty-nine hundred, thirty-two hundred, twenty-seven hundred feet away. And then as they progress through the through this year, if there's a second distance, that's how close they could get this year. This very faint white line is the approximate location they could be in two thousand twenty-two. And that would be about another hundred feet closer to each of those properties.
Yep. Very good. Yeah, I would think you should, the one up on an Olkey Road that you were unaware of and the Weber's probably should get the equipment put in there and get them part of the program, absolutely.
Okay. And if they still refuse, I still suggest that we still put equipment there, that it would be their option to still refuse.
Okay.
Just to be clear, you're talking about if they refuse the structural inspection?
Yeah, if they refuse the structural inspection, it would still be appropriate to put a seismograph there. We just would not have knowledge of what's happened. Now, I think there was also a stipulation that if they chose to refuse, they would not be able to come back on the quarry later to claim damages. Correct, Rob?
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But if you have one there, then at least you can tell from the equipment that the blast didn't affect that area more than somewhere else.
That's correct. The seismograms that we get from the equipment are going to ultimately tell us what happened. The pre-blast survey will tell us the pre-existing conditions and we can rationalize whether the damage may have occurred or not. But with today's technology and the way things go today, it's it's very rare that we have issues.
Very good. I do know my windows rattle a little bit since I'm just three quarters of a mile north of there. So.
I've never heard of that before.
Sure seems like it. My wife says, what's that? And I says, oh, don't worry, they're just working over there.
That's right. People will feel the air blast before they actually feel the the ground vibration.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, now, since Greg has started, I I can say we've done a much better job in selecting the best weather days possible, i.e. as as cloud-free as possible and as low relative humidity as possible. So the air blast is is not as not as noticeable.
Very cool.
Did you want to share with the citizens how they can get on the the list to be notified of blasting?
Yes, Greg, is that is that Lisa that maintains the list?
Yeah, I, we can have them put on the list. Lisa at the Scale House maintains the list or if they contact you or myself, we can ensure that they're put on that from an email.
Yeah, and I believe Pam may have put it on the Facebook page. Is that right, Pam?
Yes, I did. But for those that are watching right now, thought maybe you could reiterate maybe your phone number if nothing else.
The music?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to. There we go. That's my husband.
All right. Is there any other questions for these gentlemen?
Yeah, I was I was just going to add phone, the phone number to our Scale House. And the person that to ask for is Lisa, if she doesn't pick up the phone, seven-three-four-five-two-nine-five-eight-seven-six. And you can get on her email distribution list to receive advanced warning of upcoming blasts.
I got a question. So I was part of the first beginning of this back years ago. And I can't remember if not, did you guys have a filtration system that you were running the water through when you pumped it? So basically, the whole place didn't smell like sulfur coming out of the ground?
We've got on our our cement side of the business, the old wholesome, whole name side of the business, there is an onsite aeration system that uses peroxide. It injects peroxide into the water to try to knock out as many sulfides and sulfates and iron as possible before it discharges to make on creek. And that that system is is probably overtaxed because well, up until this past year, we've had, you know, historic rainfall, it seemed like each year. But when it's when it's at dry weather flows, it seems to work fairly well, is my understanding. But I I apologize, we're a little bit divorced from our cement side of the business and and those guys run that.
I just know I've had a lot of people complain to me and I've actually drove to Dundee and smelled it. I mean, it's bad, like right by your guys' whole area there on the cement side and everything. I mean, you get big sulfur smell and I didn't know if that was into it or I I mean, obviously, you're pumping it out to mine and I mean, that's all sulfur water coming that deep.
Right.
I just, I just, I was just wondering if that was getting taken care of or if you guys were having problems with it or if it's something that's supposed to be happening and wasn't. I I was just wondering.
Yeah, we've we've got a discharge permit that's managed by Eagle. And they, you know, if we have an exceedance for sulfates or sulfides into the creek, we report that. And to the best of my knowledge, the system is is working fairly well as far as keeping this, keeping those levels down in the water. But as you know, a lot of it escapes into the air and we all smell it.
Right, yeah, right. Okay, I was just curious.
Sure.
Good question.
I have a, I have a question also. Um, do you guys monitor the wells, the the deep wells in the area and and how far of a radius do you guys monitor if so?
Well, we've got, as part of our expansion permit in London Township, we've got a monitoring well, monitoring or a monitoring program for groundwater. And we offered that to all residents within, I think it was twenty-five hundred feet of the expansion limits. And we had a separate consultant go out and take baseline measurements of of water levels as well as some chemical analysis of of pre-existing conditions of the water. As far as monitoring wells that we own, there there is a network of monitoring wells around the the existing quarry to the south. But again, those those are maintained by our wholesome friends and I'm, I've just seen three or four of them, but it's my understanding there's a, there's a whole network around what we call the South Quarry. And I'm not sure how deep they are.
And I believe from one of the requirements that they were going to provide, what the the water monitoring was with that original application, I think it was, because you guys, you just, you alluded to that you did the water sampling of homes to do the fingerprinting, the signature fingerprinting of each person's well to see if there was any changes other than, you know, what normally seasonally can change. Because like if you got sulfur water, that can vary through different times of the year. But the the monitoring well system, because there's a number of them and they've been there for a long time, that there's a long history that can can reflect. And I thought that the township was supposed to receive copies of those like quarterly or something to that effect. I've got to look back to my book.
Yeah, I'd be glad to reach out to wholesome and and get that information.
How deep are those monitoring wells? Do you know, do you know offhand?
I I don't know.
Okay.
They're between like eighty to a hundred and some odd feet, hundred and thirty feet, if I remember correctly. But also the USGS also had a monitoring well system in there and because of the history with Honam that they were providing records to the township that there should be a drawer somewhere in the back of that building that's this loaded with well log reports.
Gotcha.
Also, you go online and get the HS USGS report for Monroe County and then also the second one that was done. There's about three quarters of a million dollars that was spent on studies out here.
Yeah.
It came, they even tested my well like two, three years ago, I think. Come up, measured it. So.
Yeah, so I'll be glad to get that information from wholesome and share that with you.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have, I think.
Yes.
Hey, Rob, this is Darrell Nichols. How are you, sir?
Good, how about you?
I had a, I got a quick question. Question for you, Rob. You guys are hauling out of that pit right now, correct?
Yes.
Um, can you tell me, do you guys haul out of that pit five days a week, six days a week? What does your typical week look like?
I'll defer to Greg. I know it's, it varies by season, but go ahead.
Yeah, typically now in the off-season, we'll haul four to five days per week, customer sales. And during the midsummer months, we'll do five and a half days typically. So half a day Saturday, three quarters of a day Saturday.
Okay, what, um, what holidays are typically observed at at the pit right there? Are they national holidays? I I mean, I I'm just wondering, what what holidays do you folks observe there?
Yeah, the the usual national holidays, Fourth of July, Christmas, Thanksgiving. New Year's were were shut down. Memorial Day, Labor Day, we're typically shut down those as well.
Are you guys shut down for Martin Luther King Day?
No.
Okay. That's all I wondered. Thank you.
Well, you're currently not hauling anything out of London Township, correct?
Yeah, they are.
What? No, no, we haven't started mining in London Township.
Well, you're not even allowed to work in London Township supposedly on Martin Luther King Day.
So for future reference.
Yes, yeah, quite well taken. Yep.
We need to clarify that in our ordinance, what holidays are observed, because everybody thinks like you do. I mean, every job site I work in, it's most of the main holidays. I mean, every job site I work in, it's most of the main holidays. And I I guess it's all of them, so we gotta clarify that.
Yeah, I think, I believe the ordinance says federal holidays. So, yeah, we need to make sure we're abiding by that.
It says legal holidays.
Legal holidays, okay, so it'd be a federal.
Now, the Michigan definition of legal holidays includes Dr. Martin Luther King Day.
And many others.
And November fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Discussing, I did pull up the uh the minutes for the motion that approved the uh the site plan. And one of them was the agreement to the water protection plan, which you alluded to that you guys are executing. And I am grateful for the diligence that you're doing and then the home inspections, but also that the township would and uh property owners uh that are copies of the water test. And then the the next bullet point was copy of all historic wells and water day and up from all wells. And so that was part of the, from the surrounding and existing and expanding quarry. So that was part of the criteria, but hopefully the whole, the whole name side of the 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 quarry, they have got to be doing their the the monitoring and gosh, the technology's improved so much in the last twenty years that you can put devices there that are recording daily and uh sending it out GPS uh situation for where the floats are that for monitoring that. So, yeah, it's there, we just gotta gather it up and start sending it.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the reminder.
All right, does anybody else have any more questions for these gentlemen?
Yeah, could you tell us how big the project is going to be?
How how big the project is?
How big of an area it covers, yeah, someone was asking.
Approximately a hundred and sixty-four acres, I believe.
I think, yeah.
That includes setbacks and berm.
So the hole won't be that big, Pam?
Yeah.
Right.
I think, Pam, I think you got a copy of that you were on the planning commission and went through it.
Yeah, I I personally have the information. I'm asking for the people that are watching.
Okay.
Because we're live. I have the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, if there's nothing no more questions. I appreciate you gentlemen and and giving us an update. Do we need any action here from our our group, Anita?
I don't think so.
I do, I do have one question. Now, this question, I guess, is to Ron. Have they had any violations? Or has everything been going smooth over there or any complaints or how's that been going?
Uh, Ag Industries have been ideal to deal with. We are invited anytime we want to show up. Well, when me and Kibisky inspected the last permanent cycle, everything was clear with the exception of the drainage. Um, the berm hadn't been fully constructed, but it's fully constructed now. And everything that I see when I'm there, um, and I look at topographical as well to the site plan, everything's a team. I wish uh everybody that did business in London Township was professional forthcoming as they were. Or are, I should say.
Perfect.
And when you make the motion, you have to make a motion to accept their annual review and make a recommendation to grant their permit for the next year. Since they have to come before you for initiations.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion.
Leroy will make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. We'll start with Mr. Mr. Turner this time. Jim?
Yep. Yes.
Pam Ackerman?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daryl?
Uh, yes.
Leroy?
Yes.
Myself, I vote for it. Mr. Darling?
Yes.
Uh, Anita Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
I need to make sure this will go to the, does this have to go to the main board to let them know? Very well. We got you covered, Ron?
They're good.
Very good. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Bye now.
All right, so we are to the second citizens' time.
Yeah, I'd like to raise my hand on this one.
Okay.
Um, or to uh the planning commission, are any solar panels going to be in London Township?
Uh, it's my understanding that there's a possibility. Yeah, that there are some people that are signed up. I don't know who decides, however, but there would. If it happens, there'll be a transmission system to get on the big power line somewhere along Snell Road there, I'm guessing. So, but I don't know that any of us can answer that question. Maybe Brian can.
You're still kind of in our design process. Uh, latest thinking is that there very well could be panels in both Mylan and London. But we have to finish our design to to figure that out. It it really depends on what property owners want to do, but there is the possibility at this point.
Well, you're going through Augusta Township, so it seems like you're just gonna use us as a run-through.
Oh, we're not the Augusta Township pro- project.
That is a separate group.
That's separate.
Do I?
There are several farm.
As Augusta.
Yeah, there are several farmers west of the freeway that are interested in being part of this. There are a few on the east side of the.
Well, see, that's Mylan Township. I'm asking about London Township.
I was getting to that, Mike. Um, so there's a few that are interested in London Township perhaps. But either way, they'll have to come across to get to the power lines that run to the east of my house.
And so so essentially, what what it's gonna be is panels are gonna be in Mylan Township. London Township's gonna end up being a line that goes or a a hub station to get the uh the power to Augusta. Because otherwise, I mean, it's either Mylan, this.
Well, it perhaps it could end up that way, but I do know of some farms that are interested in being part of it in London Township.
Well, yeah, because they can run the lines through there and still farm. And that's okay, but it, I asked the question to the planning commission, are there going to be any panels in London Township?
Yes.
I would say probably.
There's the potential and with the changes in Washington and depending on what tax structure and different things, incentives or requirements they require. You know, uh, Brian or or Nick, I don't know if you guys can expound upon, you were talking about how you develop your your solar array. And then you sell that to, or you sell the entire project to uh DTE or consumers. Or does Ford Motor Company buy it so they can say that they're generating electricity that's renewable for operating their plants that's in their portfolio? There's just a lot of different things that are gonna come into play on that. Now, whether or not there's gonna be a panel in Monroe or, you know, London Township or not, that comes down to how they can particularly get it into the grid. That's where the Augusta project, that entire thing is up there with that the substation, which is quite huge on Willow Road. And they've got quite a bit of the ground there. This situation, now, Brian or Nick, if you can expound upon what you'd have to do that, you know, even though there's not a high power line coming through. Uh, how are, that comes into play, where you locate.
Correct. Cor- correct, Doug, but that's a total different, that's a to- that's a total different uh company versus Apex.
Right, that's why I say, let Brian explain what what their plan would be.
Yeah, and Nick, I could let you you chime in too, but uh we would end, you know, there is a substation up in Augusta that they're tying into. And we'd actually be be constructing a separate substation. Uh, and there are actually two different power lines that are on that high voltage line, so I don't know which one the Augusta uh project is plugging into. It could actually be a different one than we are or the same one. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, and then I'd also add that, you know, when you're crafting your ordinance, it should also be about, you know, more than just uh our project. Obviously, you're crafting an ordinance for any potential future solar project uh that could tie into that line or or a different line or a small community solar project that could plug into the, just the standard, uh, you know, uh, smaller uh power lines that are going through the community. So I think however you craft your ordinance, it should be about more than our our project, but that's kind of where we're at. Nick, do you want to add anything about kind of infrastructure in London Township and kind of our process?
Yes.
Well, it it it's really not about what he wants or you want. It's about what is suitable for our community, okay? I- it's for our residents. I asked the question, how many panels are going to be roughly in our community with the design that you're proposing to us?
Yeah, we don't have a design yet.
We don't have a final design yet because we're still engaging with um local landowners and farmers and seeing who wants to to participate.
Are you gonna run lines through or are you gonna run panels through London Township to get to Augusta Township? That's the number one question I'm gonna ask you right now, both you, Brian and Nick.
We're we're not. Uh, no, we're not running. Um, that's a separate project, so we're tying to the the high voltage transmission line that runs through London Township that has capacity on it. That's how we're getting this to the grid.
So you're running lines through there?
We're wanting panels and lines. The the panels, they generate their electricity and there's lines that are in between panels and that run with with the site that tap in to the high voltage transmission line through the substation that that'll be located in London Township.
Okay, so how many panels do you feel that you're gonna run?
I'm sorry, I I not to speak out of turn here. Uh, citizens' time, what we was talking, three minutes, right? You guys are, there's two board members on here. You all will have a chance when this gets to the board. As I will suggest, not only to call a separate public hearing to answer these questions with Apex Solar around and whomever else, you'll get the public opinion, but I also work in Augusta Township. In Augusta Township, I hear a lot of complaints and concerns. Get the residents everything they need, have the public hearing, get all the information, all the information out, 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 out. And have it right there in a public forum. Even check all of our work liaisons, I think the other board member just left. Check all our work to make sure we did it right from the start. So we're not doing a back and forth. I got two people that I love with COVID. I don't want to sit to the rest of this meeting going back to the same stuff we've heard. I don't know how many meetings, all right? So, thank you.
Yep.
And the the bottom line is, is if the landowners don't agree to it, they don't get the economy of scale. It won't be any solar panels in London Township, because it comes down to economics as well.
Yep. We're a long ways from being able to come up with a count, how many there would be.
We're still early in the process and uh and 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 Mike, happy to, happy to visit with you offline too about just kind of where we're at in the process.
Send it to my township email.
All right. Anything else for citizens' time?
Amanda had her hand up.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, well, see, I learned how to raise my hand and you still didn't see it. Um.
I'm not the host. I think Anita might have seen it.
No, actually, I didn't.
Well, I just lowered it, but anyway, Dan, um, I wanted to let you know I have not forgotten about you and getting all of the um, all the draft ordinances together. Uh, I got a new computer like six months ago. The old one, I dumped everything on an external hard drive. And now I'm trying to find it. So, once I do, um, I will get those sent out.
Okay, I would appreciate it, because we are trying to, we're trying to expedite that process to um at least get something accomplished. So as soon as you can, we'd like to see it. Thank you.
Yes, I will.
When are the meeting minutes gonna be put on uh the LondonTownship.org for uh the planning commission?
Hopefully, they'll all be done uh Thursday.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else? This is time. Anything else for citizens? All right, well, let's move to commissioner comments then. Pam, did you have something you wanted to visit about?
Nope, not tonight.
Okay. Um. Well, I guess the only thing um I had um was when Amanda gets us this stuff, guys, there's, there's been a lot of time spent on this project on uh the pond ordinances and we've got to go through and undo some things that never really got finished. And then we gotta get this done right and just get on solid ground and have it over with. That's what my goal is. So I look forward to getting that stuff from Amanda, just because that'll give all the people that are absolutely new to the board a a timeline or or an idea of how we got to where we're at. And we hope to have, be able to do something in March. So that's why we're looking for that stuff, Amanda.
Also, just as a side note, Dan, it should be, once I find it, it should be pretty quick for you guys to go through. Um, because I know with the extraction ordinance, everything is in bold that was new. From, from every change, every meeting, every draft, I put everything in bold that was new. And things that were struck, I did the strike through. So it should be pretty easy for you guys to go through and some of you refresh your memory. And the rest of you, you know, just kind of look through and see what, you know, see what was changed.
That's exactly why we get it from you.
A lot of the heavy lifting on all of those ordinances have already been done.
Yeah. So is there anything else for commissioners' comments?
I just got something quick, Dan. Uh, I'd like to commend the new planning commission chairman. He is a hell of a lot more efficient than the last one that we had, and it's very refreshing. Thank you.
I was choked.
Thank you.
Do I, do I need to put that in the minute at verbatim?
Probably not.
We gotta live with it.
Right. All right. Well, I guess if there's nothing else in commissioners' comments, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Turner is the second. Any discussion, anything we missed? Let's do one more roll call. Hopefully, next month, we can be together. We can speed this process up. Mr. Ziski, why don't you go first this time?
Yes.
Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Larry Fevercorn?
Yes.
Pam Ackerman?
Yes.
James Turner?
Yes.
Kenneth Howard?
Yes.
Secretary Anita Straub?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doug Darling?
Yes.
Myself says yes. We will all talk soon.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thanks for being here, guys.
Good night, everybody. Good meeting.